All right, good evening. And welcome to the January 13th Tuolaton City Council meeting. Happy New Year, everyone. Glad everyone back. Tonight, we'll go ahead and start off our usual fashion with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Bridget tonight. This one ain't cold. All right. All right. I'm like, I'm not cold. I got this jacket on, so I'm not cold at all. All right, so we're up to public comment. This is a portion of our agenda where folks can come up and address the city council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. You have three minutes to discuss what you'd like to chat with us about. If there's anyone who would like to come up to address the city council, today, this is the right time. I have two people who are signed up, but you don't have to be, but I'll call the people who are signed up first. And first person is Chris Ragland.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members.
Good evening, Chris.
I was not expecting to present this tonight. I have a meeting to go to right after this, but once councillor Brooks asked the question about the MLK celebration, I was like, I have to stay for a little while. So, thanks through the support of the Tuolaton Library. Some friends and I are helping promote and hold a Martin Luther King Holiday Celebration on Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 15th. We chose the 15th because it is actually Martin Luther King's birthday, the 15th, and we're holding a similar program at the Tigerd Library on the actual holiday. So, we were in conflict with time, so we chose the 15th. And I tell you, I was just talking to Linda Moholt about this. One of the most special times I've had in the city of Tuolaton has been over the last few weeks, walking around town distributing these flyers to businesses and individuals, talking about the event and seeing the spark in people's eyes, and seeing that desire to want to attend and see things like this in the city of Tuolaton. And it's just really touched my heart like nothing else that I've experienced in the city. Going to all kinds of markets and restaurants and dental offices and financial and nail salons and everywhere, you know, just saying, hey, can I post this up? Give it to your employees. So, it's been wonderful. We have a variety of speakers. I'm going to be really tight on time with the program because we have so much. Our Police Chief Bill Steele has graciously accepted to address the audience. We have Ken Gibson, the Mayor of King City, and Walt Williams, the Mayor of River Grove. And we have Manny Trahila with PGE, who leads some of their diversity work. And we have a little bit of singing, and we have a facilitation period where we're going to talk the subject of race and some of Dr. King's subjects. And this is one of so many things, so many themes as well, that we could focus on for this holiday, but we chose this one for this particular event. And we're hoping this will turn into a year-after-year celebration in one way or another to celebrate this special man, what he stood for and what he symbolized.
So, what's the time, date, place?
It is this Wednesday, 6:30, at the Community Room at the Tuolaton Library.
Thank you.
And I have extra copies.
I just want to say, yeah, I want to thank you very much for doing this. I feel very fortunate. In my time in living in Michigan, in the Detroit area, I happened to be, know Congressman Conyers as a friend and a mentor, as well as an advocate for some of the things that I was passionate about advocating for at the time. And he, at the time that I knew him, he was the longest-serving congressman in our country. He worked for Martin Luther King Jr. as a lawyer. After he had served in the Korean War and came back on the GI Bill, he put this legislation to make Martin Luther King Jr. a federal holiday. I think it was for 30 years until it passed. Every year, he put it forward. So, until the time came. And so, this particular holiday holds a very special feeling in my heart. And after losing him last year, he passed away last year. One of the things I remember, one time I was in DC advocating and actually stayed and did some work with Congressman Conyers in DC and also in Detroit. And he, I, and Congressman Lewis spent some time, just the three of us, them telling me old stories about how it was, how it was working with him, what it was like then. We were listening to jazz. I think there might have been a bottle makers mark around. And so, just the work, the dedication, and what this holiday really means and what the work means and how much farther we still have to go. And having the little seeds of it all over in all of our communities, whether I'm in Detroit or in Tuolaton, Oregon, where we come together and think about these things this time of the year. So, thank you very much for taking leadership in it and Chief Steele for being active. And I'm excited that our community is excited. I think it's a time that people feel that they really want to do something with some of the divisiveness that's out there and to hold the progress that so many work so hard for and that we've seen such differences in our community and that we want to continue to see. Thank you.
Thank you for those words. I am such an admirer of him ever since I was a young, young man. I have many stories related to my personal life and listening to him and reading his speeches and how they affected me in many instances. In fact, I see it all the time, just as we finish the Pledge of Allegiance. His main message was justice for all, regardless of the topic. And so, a man like that who sacrificed his life for all Americans deserves to be remembered, revered, recognized, replicated. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris.
I'll leave some extra copies.
Yes, please. Okay, next up, I have Linda Moholt from the Tuolaton Chamber of Commerce.
Well, it's warming up. I took my scarf off. I was like freezing. Good evening, Mayor, councillor, staff. Happy New Year. Nice to see you all back to work. We would love to invite you next Thursday morning, bright and early, at Tuolaton Country Club for our Transportation Forum. And it's not a new idea. It's exactly what Representative Prusak and team and Mayor presented to the community. But as I looked around that room, I realized we need the business community at the same table. So, I called Representative Prusak and Senator Wagner and Mayor Frank, and everybody said, we're in. So, we're really excited to get a nice group of people together. And the city will have a table. Metro wasn't going to come. I got a call from them last week that they are going to come now. So, they're not on the invitation because that was a new addition. But they will also be here. And of course, TriMet, Washington County. So, I'm just really excited to share the stories of, especially the presentation that you just had, how much is going on, how much needs to be done, and how much it's going to cost. I mean, that's, you know, that's what people want to know about.
That's why Metro's got to be there.
They want to share, you know, in the how much it's going to cost and why we need you to vote. But I think it's extremely important. And as we've seen with our own successful bond, when projects are identified, costs are clear and concise, people vote for it. So, that's my hope because we've met with a couple of businesses that transportation continues to be a main conversation. But we joined Jonathan downtown for the PGE Expo for their employees. And the number-one concern really was, for those employees, how are we going to get to Tuolaton? And so, bus service, transit, driving times, very important, along with housing. You know, do you have available housing in Tuolaton if we were able to move? And then, the third thing is, what kind of food is near us? I mean, seriously, food is a big conversation. And there still isn't a lot in the industrial manufacturing area. And that particular corner of Tuolaton, Sherwood Road, doesn't have much food to offer. So, that'll be a conversation that we're going to probably want to explore as we go down that road. And then, the other piece, we spoke with, worked with Amazon today, and they joined the chamber, and they're moving in. And eventually, they'll have more than 300 employees here. And again, transit was a huge conversation. And we had connected them with Right Connection, so they'd worked with them. But one of their shifts, and probably their heaviest shift, will be from 2:00 in the morning until noon. Well, there's nothing coming into our town during those hours, whether it's a shuttle, a train, a bus. Nothing's coming here. I said, well, your selling point can be, at least you're against traffic. So, you won't be fighting long-term traffic. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time, and I hope you guys are able to join us.
I'll be there.
Yeah, you will. You'll be talking. Thank you.
Anyone else want to make any citizen comments? All right, no takers. All right. So, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of only one item. Item one, consideration of approval of the work session minutes of November 12, 2019, work session and regular minutes of November 25, 2019, and work session minutes of December 9, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. All right. Okay, going on to general business. Item number one, consideration of ordinance number 1431-20, extending the Portland General Electric franchise to a date certain of June 30, 2020, making retroactive application of the ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nick Westendorf, Management Analyst, Public Works.
And Jeff Fox, Public Works Director.
So, we're here this evening to discuss an extension of PGE's franchise agreement. The current agreement ended December 31, 2019. We were not able to come to terms on a long-term extension before that date. So, our request this evening is to extend their current franchise agreement through June 30, 2020, excuse me, retroactive as of January 1, when the previous agreement expired. And that will allow PGE and city staff ample time to continue negotiations of the new short-form franchise agreement and bring that back to council for consideration before the end of June.
I think that's it. I think it's pretty straightforward. This is just a time extension of their existing agreement.
Questions? Am I touching the third rail if I ask why? To delay, and what you couldn't come to agreement on?
We didn't, to be quite honest, we didn't spend very much time on it.
We didn't start negotiating in time.
Okay.
It snuck up on us.
Yeah.
And then, the holidays.
Kind of busy right now. You guys a little busy with a few projects out there? All right. Go ahead. Paul?
So, these obviously then aren't annual contracts. How long are the contracts usually for?
The previous agreement was for 10 years.
10 years.
The new agreement is proposed for five years.
I guess that's good enough reason to forget about it.
Just infrequent enough.
Just got to put it in your outlook.
Be here for 10 years first.
This one's going to be a little unique because we went to a right-of-way ordinance that PGE is under. However, they want us to enter into what they're calling a short-form agreement, which is like an addendum to the right-of-way ordinance that covers things that are only specific to them. So, yeah, I think that that has made it a little bit different. It may make it easier because they understand they're under a right-of-way ordinance and so, they have a, it's going to be a much shorter franchise agreement. I think it was, the previous one was pages and pages and pages, and this one is, like, I don't know, in attorney terms, it's very short. It's probably five to 10 pages, so.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? So, since this is, Sean, remind me, since this is an emergency, we got to do, how many votes on this?
So, it has to be unanimous, same number of votes. But because we're doing both a retroactive and an emergency clause and enacting on the same night, then it has to be unanimous.
So, do we do the motion and second and then roll call method?
So, yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion for first reading by title only.
Second?
I have a motion and second for first reading of Title Only of Ordinance Number 1431-20. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Unanimous?
Ordinance Number 1431-20, an ordinance extending the Portland General Electric franchise to a date certain of June 20, 2020, making retroactive application of the ordinance and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only.
Second?
I have a motion and second for a second reading of Ordinance Number 1431-20 by title only. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Ordinance Number 1431-20, an ordinance extending the Portland General Electric franchise to a date certain of June 30, 2020, making retroactive application of the ordinance and declaring an emergency.
So, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1431-20?
I have a motion and second to approve ordinance Number 1431-20. This is by roll call, starting with Paul.
Yes.
Valerie?
Aye.
Bridget?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Maria?
Yes.
Nancy?
Aye.
And the mayor votes yes. That's unanimous. I got to use this. Ordinance is passed. Wake up. All right.
We've such dramatic city council meetings.
Not like Wes Lynn. We can talk about Wes Lynn after this. Well, off record. All right. So, that ends our general business. Now, we're up to council communications. We had a little bit of communications before. Would anyone like to add something they maybe forgot their work session? Paul?
I did forget this, and I apologize.
No problem.
Tuolaton's getting a new fire station. The trucks begin rolling Thursday, January 16. It will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony sometime later this spring. They are planning and talking with the chief at wherever I was at. Oh, it might have been Denny.
They were there to force the firefighters.
Yeah, I had a conversation, I guess, I was there, I had the conversation with the chief. It turns out, this is only the fourth new station they've opened in TBFR. And so, they're kind of planning, they'd like to plan something kind of big. And so, it'll be down the road. They'll give everybody plenty of notice. And, but I think, my hope is, we will see the intended consequences of a little bit of traffic relief on TS Highway because you're going to have a three or four less fire trucks going down that road each day, interrupting that intersection. So, that would be the good news. And the good news for Lake Oswego, which is not a part of TBFR, but which they expect over half their calls to be, to assist Lake Oswego. They'll be pretty busy over there as well.
And the new location?
The location is on...
McEwen.
Thank you. McEwen, just past Burger King.
Next to U-Haul.
And right next to the U-Haul. I drove over there a couple of weeks ago, just out of curiosity. It's just a gorgeous building. It's got a community room that'll be available. And for those of you who have never reserved a community room at one of the fire stations, our HOA has had repeated meetings over at the Sherwood Community. You do it all online. It's really quick and easy, and it's really nice. It really should be a very nice addition to the city of Tuolaton.
Yeah, perhaps when they come to do their, they usually come once a year to do like a State of the District. I'm sure they will talk about it. I just heard a presentation about it as well. So, it's not a 24/7 station. It's limited hours, and it's a two-person crew out of that station. But they do expect so much from it that, I mean, that they will be able to access I-5 much quicker. And of course, the benefit of the community room is really nice.
Other communications? Bridget?
These are more focused towards the community. So, I wanted to say, first of all, in December, I did attend the CERT Holiday Dinner, and I want to appreciate all the CERT volunteers and people that showed up, and even people that couldn't make it. It was great to see everyone there, and they put so much work into that dinner, and it was really well-attended. The next morning, I joined the mayor at the city holiday breakfast, which just for the outfits alone, I would encourage everyone to come. There are lots of ugly Christmas sweaters, and...
Don's onesie.
Don wore a onesie, which, I mean that right there. And I think I wore my antlers for shopping and everything else for the rest of the time of the holiday season. So, it was a really, it was a really fun time. And it's such a great way of being, I have to say, I appreciate, it's a privilege to be a city councillor. I know that. And one of the ways that it's a privilege for me is just to be engaged with the city staff to build the holiday spirit with you all and with the community in a way that I wouldn't have the opportunity to in so many different opportunities and circumstances with different people in our community. So, I just want to thank everybody for sharing the spirit with me. And I got to serve the bacon, which I think was pretty much the hot ticket, except for the vegetarians, but...
The eggs.
And I didn't over-serve, so I, there was bacon for all. And then, the next day, I was over at Fred Meyer's with the shop with the cup, with Chief Steele. And I think with that many police officer, I mean, talking to the kids, I have to say, the kids, some of the stuff these kids said to me was cracking me up through the whole holiday. There was, just the, just the way that they were, was so funny. One young man was just sort of directing the whole show, and he was all hyped up and really excited. And a young lady, too, we had quite a conversation, so. And then, to see the officers, how invested they were, and to also be part of the police foundation and support that way, felt really good to see that in action. I do think that maybe the officers should wear hats or something next time because I think that I saw some startled people in the Fred Meyer's wondering why. Like, there was a huge police presence over by the guest register. But, you know, but it was also the opportunity that they could come up and talk and hear more about the program. So, it did give them the opportunity to interface with our officers. But it was, it was a really special heartwarming, and Chief Steele really took a lot of time with me and told me more about all of the details of the program and what was happening at that time. So, I felt very welcome, and it was a true pleasure and privilege. And finally, I want to, just because we did talk about it, but in case somebody's just tuning in for the announcements, Healing the Divide is Wednesday at the Public Library, so check it out and sign up. And again, Happy New Year to everybody. Nice to see you.
Anything else? All right. Do I have a motion to end the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
I have a motion and second to adjourn the Tuolaton City Council meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Unanimous? Anyone need a break, or you want to go right into the commission meeting? All right. I don't think, have I ever done a commission meeting? I don't even remember. One? Yeah, there it goes. Yeah. All right. Let's go ahead and start the Monday, January 13, 2020, Tuolaton Development Commission meeting. We're not doing the pledge. We already did that. We're up to public comment. This is the portion of the program where we're allowed to come up and address the commission on anything that is not on the agenda tonight. I don't have anybody signed up.
It's always baits.
So, there's no one here for a public comment. The consent agenda, the consent agenda tonight consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the Tuolaton Development Commission meeting minutes of June 24, it was not long ago, 2019. Any commissioners would like this removed from the agenda? If not, would you like to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. General business. Item number one, resolution transferring all remaining non-tax increment funding from the Central Urban Renewal District Capital Project Fund to the Tuolaton Development Commission Administration Fund. It's a mouthful.
I think how we're going to handle this is Jonathan's going to go through the presentation, and then you can go through the resolutions separately.
All right.
So, first of all, good evening, Chair and members of the commission.
Welcome back.
Yes, and Happy New Year, and I hope each of you had a wonderful holiday season. Commissioner Pratt saw me get T-boned, which was fun, but not real. So, tonight, you sit as the appointed members of the Tuolaton Development Commission. So, in this role, as we learned through our education series, you are tasked with the management of the city's URAs, the Urban Renewal Districts, which are both the Central Urban Renewal District and Leviton, and the management and implementation of the plan. However, tonight, we are going to celebrate and end the 44 years of success that Central Urban Renewal District has had for the city of Tuolaton and for its community residents. First of all, my name is Jonathan Taylor. I'm the Economic Development Manager. And how did we get here tonight? So, early last year, beginning in April, we began an Urban Renewal Education Series. The first session was, what is urban renewal? We learned about tax increment finance, all the way down to the legal obligations that both the Urban Renewal Agency has, as well as the legal obligations of what development they can do, led by Elaine Howard, our consultant with Elaine Howard Consulting. The second session in June focused on Tuolaton's urban renewal specifically and what it has done and what it's able to do. And then, in session three, we discussed with you in sort of a kind of round-robin format of where should we go from here? And one of the key items that you requested as both council and sitting as the commission was the official closure of the Central Urban Renewal District. So, real quick, what are the successes of Central Urban Renewal? So, 327 city acres were redeveloped, both directly and indirectly. Forty-one of the 60 projects as listed in the CURD Plan were completed. $180 million increase in valuation, so from 14 million, which was at the time of the Herbin food plant or pet food plant, to 194 million at the close of 2012. Notable achievements include the Tuolaton Commons, the Tuolaton Sherwood Bypass, most recently, the Nyberg I-5 interchange, the core area parking, and the Tuolaton City Library. But most importantly was the community pride that resulted from all that investment and 44 years of effort by the city of Tuolaton. So, tonight, you have three resolutions before you. The fund transfer, which will transfer all remaining funds in the CURD Project Fund to the CURD Administrative Fund. This will bring the total around $210,000. We'll have to calculate interest from both October, November, and December, and Don will handle that. And those funds will be used for the continued TDC administration, which is what we do with economic development here and there, but also future feasibility studies. And that is the first resolution in front of you tonight. Do you want me to continue, Sharon? Okay. Okay. The second resolution will be the land transfer resolution. While I have stated that there are 11 properties, and this is how I framed it, there are actually 21 parcels or legal lots that will be transferred from the TDC to the city of Tuolleton. Through that, you will direct the executive director, which is Sherilyn, to execute a land transfer agreement with the city of Tuolleton. It's kind of redundant, but, you know, legally, we kind of have to do it that way, because you said it's also city council. And then last, we will officially close and terminate the district and plan. Terminate's a harsh word, but that's what it says in the general statutes. And then you will officially adopt the 2012 URA final report, which was done at the behest of when we stopped collecting tax increment finance. So what I mean by officially close and terminate, it's just the termination of the plan, therefore the CURD will no longer exist as, and all tax increment money that were originally around have already been distributed back to other taxing jurisdictions. So this is the last and final piece of ending those 44 years of development for the Central Urban Renewal District.
Question, yeah, questions? Go ahead.
Just, I don't want you to have to list all 18 properties or lots or whatever, but could you just, when you say 11 properties, just to make sure that I...
Absolutely. So in your council packet on the first one, there is a map attached.
Mm-hmm.
It does. It will be, it'll be this one right here.
Can you pick it up? Because core area lots are, yeah, the primary ones, there's a lot next to...
To the police department. Those are the primary ones.
Yeah.
The biggest ones.
Other questions? Paul?
I'll go first, Sherlyn.
Valerie?
Oh, I just wondered, like, that money goes mainly into that fund for feasibility studies, and what do feasibility studies typically run?
So according to Elaine, which we have already begun the discussions of what that may look like if the commission and council decides to go forward with that, it's around 30,000 to 40,000 per district. But that's, that's everything included, from public outreach to the tax increment forecasting to all that stuff.
Paul?
Yeah. So my question has to do with the, the plot of land, specifically the, the land that, where the food cart was on. That was, is that, I understood that was owned by the Tuolleton Commission. Is that being transferred to the, I couldn't tell on this map if that was one of the lots being transferred. And if it is being transferred, my question is, have we researched any liability issues? Because I know, I, I didn't know this until last year, that there was a gas station at that location. And I do know this from a previous job I used to do, that there are grandfathered in some ownership issues, and that when you transfer the land, the new owner is no longer grandfathered in on environmental issues. So are we, does that affect us in any way, or, and have we, have we even, have we looked into that? And that's my only, that's my only cautionary tale.
Yeah, so we, we have a, a close report from DEQ on that. We had been monitoring that for some time. I, I forget how many years ago we got that, that report from DEQ, so.
You guys are, I have to ask a question.
We had to monitor it for like 10 years or something like that, every year, and do testing and check into...
DEQ, and they gave, what's the official, like...
Mediation.
Yeah, it's like, basically remediation is complete, but there's like, it's like, you're done.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I remember the 76 station there. Other questions? And just to clarify from my mind, this is just the central urban one. This is not Leventon. There's still, we still have the other one out there.
Correct.
Right, so we're closing down one of the urban renewals. Yep.
Do you want to do the next slide?
It's just about moving forward. Oh, yeah. So, sorry.
Nice segue for you.
I know, right? So, in the October council work session, the council identified three goals that they wish to see moving forward in 2020, which was the official termination of the Central Urban Renewal Plan and District, identify Leventon projects and shrink district, and moving forward with that one, and then explore the feasibility of new districts. And so tonight, upon the successful ratification of these resolutions, the first one will be completed, and then two of those resolutions, both the land transfer agreement and the closure resolution, will be forwarded to the city council for consideration on the 27th. The fund administration resolution will not need to go forward. This is a commission-only resolution.
Comments? Motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 613-20.
What?
Second?
You got a different number than I do?
No, it's not listed on the agenda.
Oh.
It's listed on the top of the resolution.
Oh, you're right. I'll second that.
So it's 613, what? Because I got, I got 614.
Yeah, go down.
Then I got 61520.
Right.
Oh, there's no number there. I got you. Got you. All right.
Try to keep an eye on this one for you.
No, this one's not an emergency. All right. Do I have a second?
Yeah, we seconded twice.
All right. I got a motion and a second, a resolution number, what was it again?
613-20.
613-20. Any discussion on that motion? This one does not have to be a roll call, correct? You got, you're killing me. This is...
That is correct. We have no rules for the commission.
I know.
You're, you're free.
Wow. So all those in favor of adopting a resolution, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Those opposed? All right. It passes unanimously, or approved unanimously.
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution number 614-20.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution number 614-20. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution 615-20.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second for adoption of Resolution 615-20. Any discussion on that motion? Yes?
Yeah, so, I want to take a moment, because as I read the packet, realized this urban renewal district is older than I am. And to think that...
Speak for yourself.
So, on occasion, I, I've got a chance to, as frank as you've seen, walk around the lake with my kids, hunting Pokemons, and just looking at all the history that's around there, and really what a tremendous job and vision that the folks 44 years ago had for this area of town. While it's often maligned as not good enough, it's a whole lot better than it ever was. And I'd like for us to not only look back and appreciate the people who had that vision and followed it through, but to think about the magnitude of change that they made as we look forward to new urban renewal areas in town, and the difference we might be able to make of people looking 40 years from now at the decisions we're gonna make over the next year or two. So I just wanted to speak about the impact of what had happened, and then hopefully what we can do as well in the future.
See how young you were?
Just a, just a quick plug, though, commission. Both the Central Urban Renewal District and Leventon is often cited as prime example case studies for Oregon Urban Renewal for the success that it has done. Both Leventon is the greenfield redevelopment, and Central Urban Renewal is for downtown redevelopment, kind of making that sense of place. So it's something to hang your hat on, but it's like to your statement, Commissioner, about moving forward and using these past successes, about kind of that guiding light of what to do in the future.
Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes, it's adopted unanimously. All right. That moves us on to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?